Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 3, 2020 Clovis City Council Meeting. Given the current Shelter in Place order covering the state of California and social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the web address shown. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meetings by accessing the webcast at the address noted, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council chambers in person. We are practicing social distancing. We can only accommodate a maximum of 16 persons at a time. I will call the meeting to order and ask Council Member Waylon to lead us in the flights later.
Sorry, let's start again. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and to our republic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. And if the clerk will call, roll please.
Councilor Ashbeck.
Here.
Councilor Flores.
Here.
Councilor Wannatua.
Here.
Councilor Waylon.
Here.
Mayor Besseger.
Here. And now we come to the Presentations and Proclamations portion of this meeting. And the first presentation, it's going to be my honor to do. It's the Presentation of Proclamation to Sergeant Vince Wybert upon his retirement and commending him for 35 years of service to the Clovis community. Hi, Vince. The City of Clovis Proclamation honoring Clovis Police Sergeant Vince Wybert. Whereas Sergeant Vince Wybert began his career in 1985 as a police aide in the Records Division of the Clovis Police Department. In 1987, Vince also worked as a reserve police officer until 1990, when he was sworn in as a full-time police officer with the Clovis Police Department. And whereas Vince served as a patrol officer until 1997, when he was promoted to police corporal. Vince was promoted to police sergeant in 2013. During his career, Vince worked in many different assignments in specialty units, including patrol, investigations, SWAT, and crisis negotiation team. He has served as a field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, and unit coordinator, public information officer, field training officer coordinator, citizens academy coordinator, principal policing instructor and training unit coordinator, bias-based policing instructor and unit coordinator, and a tactical communications, interpersonal communication instructor and unit coordinator. He also served as a member of the High Tech Crimes Unit Uniform Committee and crowd management team. Vince has earned two lifesaving medals, a Medal of Distinction, a Medal of Merit, and a unit citation for his outstanding work throughout his career. And whereas Vince graduated in 2012 from the post-master instructor development program, becoming one of just a few hundreds such instructors trained across the state in adult education techniques and curriculum development for law enforcement. With this training, he revamped the presentation methods of content at the department and mentored many other trainers in-house. Vince also developed and presented a three-day training on law enforcement, customer service, philosophy, de-escalation, and communication techniques to several agencies across the state. He also represented the Clovis Police Department as a facilitator in the state of California post-video training presented to agencies across the state on topics of homelessness, mental illness, bias-based policing, crowd management, and K-9 tactics. And whereas Vince is also a facilitator with the Post Sherman Block Leadership Institute, providing leadership training and development to sergeants across the state. Additionally, he is a statewide trainer for law enforcement on principal policing and procedural justice through the California State University Long Beach and South Bay Regional Training Center, a presenter to the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, and the Marin County Education on Topics of De-escalation and Communication. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Clovis, on behalf of the citizens of Clovis, does hereby honor and recognize Sergeant Vince Wybert for his 35 years of service to this community as he retires. As is witnessed, therefore, I set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Clovis to be affixed this third day of August 2020. I'm very proud of you, Vince. We've been through a lot together over the years, and you have served this community in an exemplary manner. Would you like to say anything?
I'm glad you got to speak all those words and I didn't have to. Just real quick, 35 years, huge accomplishment to our community, the service that Vince has provided. It's a huge loss for us. I'm excited for him and his family, his retirement, but it's a huge loss when you lose somebody that has 35 years of experience. And really, in the latter part of Vince's career, a lot of what you heard there was all the training, mentoring, facilitating of training that he's done. And a lot of the critical training that we need right now is what Vince teaches with de-escalation, principal-based policing, implicit bias. These are all the hot topics that Vince is leaving us behind with. But Vince promised me that he would fly back here anytime we needed training free of charge for the City of Clovis. So we're excited about that. But he is going to continue in his retirement and teaching for post. That's his passion, and he's going to continue on with that. So I just want to thank Vince. I am one of his, I guess, trainees when he was a field training officer back in the day, and he was my first FTO when I came here to Clovis. So I'm going to miss you for sure. Thanks.
Vince, do you have anything you'd like to say, or anybody you'd like to introduce before you get yourself in trouble?
I actually hadn't planned on saying anything. And based on what you talked about, all the facilitation and teaching, I don't talk in front of people much. However, I would obviously like to introduce my wife, Shaleen, also a former officer with Clovis Police Department, who served with us for 11 and a half years, and my son Sullivan, who has been in Clovis for 17, almost 18 years now. My other son, Gage, is living out of state right now and was unable to attend. But I'd like to thank them, obviously, for all the love and support that I've received from them over the years. Obviously, you can't be successful in this career without the support of family and all the sacrifice that goes along with it. For all the council members, I've known you for a very long time. We've had good relationships and have all gotten along very well. I'll miss all of you, and I want to thank all of you and the City of Clovis. I've been very blessed and very fortunate to work for 30 years, 35 total with the city, but 30 years in a career that I love, and really could probably continue to go on doing. But the time's right to go ahead and move on, and to do so in a city that I love and work with people that I love. So thank you very much to everybody. And Drew, thank you especially for all the mentoring and guidance that you gave me over the years. Really a special deal to have you present that. Thank you.
Yes. And we have a nice plaque for you. And in COVID days, this is a very strange thing. If you could come up here, maybe Shaleen, if you'd come up too, we'll present this. And if we could come in a social distancing environment, if we could get a picture really quickly. Now that we're all wearing masks, this is very strange.
Right. Make sure that he's standing.
And then after this, the city manager has something for you, your city manager/neighbor. You have to smile with the eyes.
I know.
I do have one question. Where are you flying back from? I heard this story and I forgot.
From North Carolina.
Do you get permission to leave the space?
The good thing is you got a guy at the airport now, so that's a good thing. That's been a subject of much discussion, this whole permission to leave thing, but it hasn't, it's fallen on deaf ears. But, well, I tried, but I couldn't convince him to stay. But Vince, I still know some people out in public utilities, and I had them make up a sign for you. So you get the traditional City of Clovis sign. And they said that's because you have to live next to me for 21 years, so.
Okay, yeah. I was talking to your wife, I'm sorry. And Vince, if you want to open that up, I think probably.
It makes a better picture of the judge.
Yeah. Vince, thank you. It's been a pleasure. I'm glad to see that Vince isn't walking with a limp anymore. I did hit him with a baton one night. I do. That's how I injured this hand, not on him. And we have another proclamation. This is a proclamation commemorating the 75th anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki during World War II. And Lynn Ashbeck will be during the presentation. And Mr. Keta, do we want to read the presentation first and then have Dale talk?
Whatever he'd like to do.
Dale, would you like to talk first or do that after the presentation? Whatever you'd like, sir.
Thank the mayor and members of the city council for this proclamation. My name is Dale Iketa in Clovis, Dale Iketa, which is how I grew up. I was born and raised in Clovis, a proud Clovis high Cougar. I served as a Fresno County Superior Court, sometimes in the Justice Court here in Clovis. I currently serve as Honorary Counsel of Japan in Fresno, associated with the Japanese consulate in San Francisco. When I was presented as honorary counsel, I said that by representing Japan in this diplomatic capacity did not in any way lessen my love for America. This particular event is really a series of events. There'll be tree plantings at California Health Sciences University here in Clovis, at the United Japanese Christian Church out on Villa in Clovis, at the Peace Garden at Fresno State, at the Shinzen Garden in Fresno near my home, and at the Fresno Buddhist Church. And these peace trees are a symbol of resilience and hope for a more peaceful world. These trees that are being planted are from the seeds of a camphor tree within a mile of the epicenter of the bombing of Hiroshima on August 6, 1945. So this is the 75th anniversary of that horrific event, but which had the effect of helped bring World War II to an end. So the mission of this Hiroshima Green Tree Peace Project is really to say that we really need to find ways to resolve conflicts in a just and peaceful way, rather than war, which should be a last resort and should not require use of a weapon of mass destruction as a nuclear weapon. And the weapons we have now are much, much more powerful than what was dropped on Hiroshima and Nagasaki. Nevertheless, over 100,000 people were killed in Hiroshima in an instant, and over 70,000 in Nagasaki. So we hope that these trees will be a symbol of peace and resilience and the hope for a better future. And I thank you for this proclamation and the declaration of this week as US-Japan Peace Week. And I especially thank Council Member Ashbeck for carrying this proclamation for us.
My pleasure, Judge. So I'd like to rename this proclamation One of Peace and Hope, but it currently reads commemorating the 75th anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki during World War II. On a personal note, my father's 20th birthday on the day of this bombing. So whereas on December 7, 1941, the Empire of Japan attacked the naval base stationed at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, resulting in the US Declaration of War against Japan during World War II. And whereas on February 19, 1942, President Franklin D. Roosevelt issued Executive Order Number 9066, authorizing the exclusion of any and all persons from areas designated as war zones. And whereas, the executive order was used to justify the incarceration of approximately 120,000 Americans of Japanese ancestry, over 70% American-born citizens on the grounds of military necessity, despite the fact that not a single Japanese-American was ever charged or convicted of espionage or sabotage against the United States of America during World War II. And whereas, over 30,000 Japanese-Americans served with distinction in the United States Military Forces during World War II, including the famed 442nd Regimental Combat Team and the 100th Battalion, proving their loyalty to America and paving the way for a better future for their families and future generations. And whereas, the Nisei, second-generation Japanese-American soldiers, served as translators, interpreters, and interrogators in the Pacific Theater during World War II and during the American occupation of Japan after the war, serving as a bridge between the US and Japan. And whereas, over the years, Japan has adopted a constitution prohibiting war as an instrument of international relations. Adopted a constitution prohibiting war as an instrument of international relations, is a leading trade partner with the US and has become America's strongest ally in the Pacific. And whereas, August 6 and August 9, 2020, marked the 75th anniversary of America's bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, respectively. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Clovis hereby proclaims the week of August 3 through the 9, 2020, as US-Japan Peace Week in the City of Clovis, as is signed today by our mayor. Thank you, Dale, for bringing this to us. It's really important to remember this story that wasn't all that long ago. Thank you for bringing it to the council.
If I may, under the well, I'll distribute flyers for the Peace Garden event.
Thank you, Lynn. Now we come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Is there any member, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will open this to, is there anyone on the web?
None.
We have none on the web. Mr. Clerk, did we have any public comments that wanted to be read into the record?
No, you do have a public comment packet that was received, but none to be read into the record this evening.
I did, I did read the public comment packet, and they will be part of the record. I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by unanimous consent of the council. Come to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature or placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless the council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For the adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Any member of the council wish to have any item on the consent calendar poll? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to have an item on the consent calendar poll? I see no one in chambers. Is there any comment on the web?
None.
Thank you. And Ms. Clerk, there was no, nothing in writing for that, correct?
Nothing.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Then we come to the public hearings portion of the meeting. Public hearings are open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the city council for which special notice has been given and may be required. When a public hearing is continued, noticing of the adjourned item is required as per Government Code 54955.1. Item 17, consider introduction of an ordinance amending the Clovis Municipal Code Section 2.1.32, establishing salaries of city council members and increasing the present salary to be effective after the March 2021 municipal election. Carrie Chai is our presenter. Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As we are approaching our next general municipal election, the first item for council consideration is an ordinance to amend the Clovis Municipal Code Section 2.1.32, which establishes the salaries of the city council members. The California Government Code Section 36516 provides that the city council may increase the salary by 5% for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjustment. If council should choose to make an adjustment again, it would become effective in March 2021 after the election. The city council salaries were last adjusted in 2018 and are presently set at $1,455 per month. Council salaries should be reviewed periodically to provide reasonable compensation for city council duties as provided by law. Staff is recommending council to consider the following options. The first option is to increase the salary by 10% per state law. This would result in an increase to $1,601 per month. A second option is to increase the salary to an amount that is equal to what city employees received over a two-year term. For reference, in 2018, council had approved a salary increase in the amount of 6.5%, which was equivalent to the 3% increase in 2017 plus the 3.5% increase in 2018 that city employees had received. If council should choose a similar option like this again, the council salary would increase by a total of 4%, which is equivalent to staff receiving a 2% increase in 2019 plus a 2% increase in 2020. The council salary would then be $1,513 per month with that 4% increase. And lastly, a third option is to make no adjustments to the council salaries and leave it at $1,455 per month. To give you an idea of what other California cities that are comparable to the City of Clovis are doing in regards to council salaries, we've reached out to eight cities and have provided the information in the table above for reference. Because the salaries were last reviewed and adjusted two years ago, staff is recommending council to consider an adjustment to the current monthly salary set at $1,455. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for staff?
If we didn't act, if we did nothing, if we did option three, the next time we would do this was in 2022, prior to the 2023 election, is that right?
Yeah.
You have lost track of when.
Sure. So we have a March 2021, and the next one is going to be in November 2022, so that this would next be considered after the next election, but it would become effective in November of 2022.
Okay, so it would be somewhere after March of '21 to take effect in November of '22. I lost track. Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Bob. Thank you. I've got a question for somebody from either Luke or Finance, related to our expectations about the next two years related to staff salaries. Is it premature at this point to kind of know what to expect in the next two years, or at least what will be the question of our employees?
So we have a contract in place that covers, it covered, it began last July 1, and it goes for three years. So we had a 2% increase, cost of living increase last July 1, which was since the last council raise. We have implemented another 2% in the current fiscal year, and we anticipate implementing, we have the two years in the contract barring anything unforeseen. Now, of course, you know, this whole COVID impacts, it has impacted our budget, but so far we have not looked at reducing those COLAs as part of any budget issues. So we would anticipate issuing another 2% next July.
And then, if anybody knows, I know that we've had some expectations related to how much our revenues are related to, I think, sales tax really, have been impacted by the governor shutdown related to COVID. Is there a, do we have numbers yet for, I guess, would be the second quarter of the calendar year?
So we, we sat through our sales tax consultant's presentation on, just last week, and between the state changing their financing system, the state changing how they disperse the funds, how much is the prepay and how much comes in the true-up afterwards, between some tax holidays that were granted, we have no idea where we're at. I mean, John and I walked out of that, that meeting after an hour and went, we know nothing really about where we are other than the projections we've made so far. I mean, we have an idea where we're at based on, on some sales figures, but so much of the sales currently seems to be shifting to online, away from brick and mortar to online, that while that, while the local numbers have gone way down, the online has gone way up. We anticipate at this point, still sticking with the budget that was approved just a month ago, we will have hopefully better numbers a quarter from now, but right now things are in such flux that there were under-reporting, non-reports, failure to submit, so it, right now, we're still going on the budget that we adopted.
And just to clarify, that what we heard on Thursday was for the first quarter, so we don't have any idea what the second quarter, which would be April, May, June.
Oh, I see. Okay. I thought we had some idea of the first quarter. It was coming in a little bit less than what we had expected, and we had dropped our numbers, our expectations. Is that kind of right, Jay? Nothing, nothing certain, though. These were just kind of rough figures. All right. Did we get any rough figures for the second quarter?
Yeah. All of the first. We talked about the 10th.
Okay. Okay. I love how you put air quotes over improved.
Yeah. So it has been a challenge knowing exactly where we're at, but right now we are still operating under the budget that we adopted of, at the end, before, for this fiscal year, and that includes the 2% for this, which has already been implemented, and we're still planning for 2% next year barring any significant, significant change that, this year we made up the necessary savings or as much savings as we could through keeping positions vacant. We didn't go back for any contract give-ups.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Bob.
Can you let us know how, how much the benefits part of council salaries are potentially, roughly, if the council member chose to take full advantage of it? Do we know that, that figure?
Because that will keep going up, correct?
year, and the salaries were at 87.5. So the, the benefits are significantly higher than the salaries. And those stay the same, and those are, those are going up at more than 2%.
Yeah.
But they go up based on what the insurance rates do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other member of the council want to ask staff anything? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address, member of the public in council chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, we got any comments on this item?
We did not.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion.
I would, prior to the discussion, I would just, I would entertain a motion that we do option three, which is do nothing. It's a small amount of money, so it's not about the money. I just don't, this reminds me of 2008 when we didn't take the raises, when things were so uncertain, so I, it just doesn't seem quite right to take a raise, even if it's really small. So I would make that motion. There's a second, then you can have discussion, but I just like to put that out there initially, that doesn't seem like this is the time to take a raise of any size.
I'll second it. And if I could have an opportunity to comment as well?
Absolutely. A motion in a second, and Bob.
Thank you. So when I first got on the council, it was, it was odd to me that it just seemed like it was a matter of fact that we would always get a, you know, a 5% per year raise. And it was this, the three of us and then the other two that were here, that it was during the last recession that we recognized that that seemed incongruent with what was taking place out in the economy. And so we made our adjustment to reflect what it was that our staff was making. So if they were getting a certain amount of increase, then that's what we were, we would get as well. The, the idea that, in fact, I think that we even took a pay cut, not just a no, no increase during the last recession. So I don't know what to expect over the next couple of years, and I think that, you know, frankly, a lot of us, this is a labor of love. It's, we can't, we're not making a living off of, of this, and to forego the, the increases a very minor sacrifice for us to make, but symbolically, I think it might set the tone moving forward, and I'm willing to, you know, help set that tone like Lynn has suggested.
Bob.
Yeah, I concur. I believe that, given the present situation, that it is best that we set the example, and it's very little, we don't need this extra couple hundred dollars. And also for, Carrie, thank you for the presentation in front of us, and so, thank you.
Jose.
I concur. We did it last time, and we actually did take a, a pay cut, so, yeah, I'm there.
I, I'm also in agreement. When I was in the military, officers always ate last, and they never went to bed until their, their troops were bedded down and had a place to go. We are the de facto officers of this army, and we need to do the same, the very same thing. We don't know where this is going to go, and this is the right thing to do. So we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Item number 18, consider approval of a resolution, resolution, 2000, resolution approving a proposed mitigated negative declaration and adopting a mitigated monitoring program for the community investment project, CIP 17-13, Nease Avenue Improvement Project from Minewawa to Clovis Avenue. Claudia Casares is our presenter.
Hi, good evening. Claudia Casares with the Plaid and Development Department, Engineering Division. Before you today, of course, is the Sequa project for the Nease Avenue Improvements project, Minewawa to Clovis Avenue, which will widen, which will widen a half mile of Nease Avenue within the project limits. Currently, Nease is a three-lane arterial, and it will be widened to a four-lane arterial by adding an additional 12-foot westbound travel lane on the north side of Nease. The project will also replace failing pavement, install landscaping, underground utilities, install a Class II bicycle lane, and provide sidewalk slash trail on the north side of the street, among other improvements, to provide for improved pedestrian and bicycle connectivity for every residence as well, and improve traffic flow to the Buchanan Educational Complex. The city contracted with Proverston Pritchard to develop the sequel analysis and recommendation for this project. Ultimately, it has been determined that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment with the implementation of standard mitigation measures, which will be incorporated into the project's scope of work. As is required, the initial study and the environmental findings were circulated for public review for a period of 30 days in the Business Journal before this public hearing, and no comments have been received to date. Our recommended action is to approve a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and adopting a mitigation monitoring program for CIP 17-13, Nease Avenue from Minewawa to Clovis.
Thank you. Any questions for Claudia?
Bob. Thank you. So first, let me just, before I ask my question, I just want to be open, I attend the Well Community Church online right now, but they own the property that is just to the north of this street improvement. The, I want to make sure that we're clear that the, the federal grant that is going to be funding this, that came in, in what year? Do you know that we were, or do you know when we received that grant?
That's a good question. We, I'd have to look, Mike CD has an answer for that. We've been working on this project for a while, and it's finally come to the stage where we're in the inter-design phase.
Okay. And if it was four or five years ago, then that would be prior to the Well purchasing that property or even looking.
That's correct. They just purchased it this year.
Okay. And then, has the, the Well, have they given an indication to the city where they're going to be having some ingress or egress or need some stubs for some of the infrastructure that's going to be required there?
Yes, they've submitted to the city a preliminary site plan through our DRC process, and they are working with the DRU team to review the ingress and the egress on both Nease and potentially Clovis. For now, we're focusing on the Nease entrance and exits and making sure that they are working with our project engineer in, in our CIP side to make sure that they align with each other.
So the, the objective, I think, is that we don't have to cut into Nease Avenue again?
Exactly.
Okay.
And we've been working with the Well now for a couple of years, when they first thought about buying that property.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much, Claudia.
Bob. Claudia, on the westbound Nease, how long will that right turn lane be going into Education? Do you really pay attention much? Will it be longer just because of the anticipated people going?
The improvements will not be in front of the school.
Okay. But you know how, how Nease ends right at, is it Minewawa, right? A lot of people turn right to go into Buchanan there. Do you know, will it make it longer than normal just so that it can handle all the cars that potentially would go to Buchanan?
I'm looking at my engineers to see if they have an answer for me.
That may be later, huh? Is that something that, that'll be later?
The plans are being worked on. They haven't been finalized yet, so that'll.
Yeah, if we can pay attention to that, because if, if it's too short, then I think it, it impedes the lanes that are going, and so if there's a way to make that right turn lane a little bit longer, I think it relieves the traffic. I come from that way whenever I go to Buchanan, and so now that we, we are expanding, we can look into that. Thank you.
Lynn.
Claudia, the, I see Mr. Smith in the audience. I don't know, Bill, if you want to talk, but I was looking at the assessment of transportation. It talks about impact on recreational, et cetera. Does it have any, does it measure impact on commerce, and if so, I don't know the access, the importance of that avenue to what's happening at Wawona, but as an employer in our city, can you talk about how that was impacted, or if?
I will make an attempt, because I've, I've worked on the, on the site plan comments for the Well, and I've had a chance to talk to Mr. Smith as well, working closely with the Well. They have told us recently that they are still leasing part of the land and some of the buildings to Wawona, and so they will be ensuring that there's still access for the buildings on the north side of the properties, and we will be working with them to make sure that that's included in our CIP project as well.
Okay. Does the EIR typically take into account impact on commerce?
No.
At all? Not movement of goods or just cultural? It's just environmental?
Recreational.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open this to the public. Any member of the public in council chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we have anybody on the web?
There are none.
Did we get any public comments on this item?
We did not.
Mr. Clerk? Okay, I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or for action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the mitigated negative declaration and adopt the monitoring program for CIP 17-13, Nease Avenue Improvements from Minewawa to Clovis Avenue.
Second, have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 19, consider a request from property owner of 3030 Shaw Avenue to waive water connection fees for this connection to city water. Mike Harrison is our presenter. Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff was approached by the property owner at the southeast corner of Locan and Shaw Avenues, indicating that her well was running dry, and she wanted to look into hooking up to city water. She lives on a, on a single family, in a single-family home on seven and a half acres. Staff began working with, with her on estimating what the development fees would be. For a seven and a half acre parcel, if assessed on the total property, the fees would be around $118,000 for the water hookup. However, there are provisions in the municipal code that allow for reducing the amount of area that the fees are assessed on, and this has been put into a policy that staff uses when these single-family homes come in for water connection. So in the final analysis, the, the fees are now at $17,000. I think this is, this represents the lowest amount in what's allowed by code that we can go to for the fees. This fee does not include the cost of constructing the service from the main to the point of connection on the property. That cost is estimated around $5,000 to $10,000 based on discussions with the property owner. The property owner, after all of those discussions, indicated that she cannot afford the cost The property owner, after all of those discussions, indicated that she cannot afford the cost of that connection and has requested that the city council waive the connection fees for the wa, for the water, for the water connection. She's indicating that she can afford the construction cost, but she can't afford the connection fees. Staff did discuss with the property owner, other, some of the options that are available. Because she's a long time, long-term property owner on the property, the code allows for property owners that have been on the land since 1993 or before to drill a new well if they desire, even though the, for other property owners, new well drilling is prohibited. We've also talked to her about financing the fees. She's able to finance the fees at a low interest rate over a 10-year period and she's still requesting the waiver. After this, after staff wrote this report, we also discussed, discussed with her that eventually we will need right of way on Locan Avenue. We would be able to purchase that land in advance of the need for it and that would provide her with the capital that she would need to, to do the construction and to pay, and to pay the fees. She's not interested in this option and is still requesting the fee waiver. Staff does not recommend approval of the waiver and is recommending denial of the request. Such a waiver is not included in any provision of the municipal code and might set an unintended precedent that, that we wouldn't want. So, those are my comments. That concludes my report for now. I believe that the property owner is in the audience or possibly on the phone and I'm available for questions.
Lynn? Mike, the, the kind of advance on the right of way is an interesting option. Do you have any, what's your forecast timeframe that we would need to acquire that right of way? That we would, we would, we would exercise the, the need to use that right of way for construction or improvement or whatnot?
Well, it would depend on development of the property and if the property owner does not want to develop, that could be a lot of years. I guess the other alternative would be that if it becomes a traffic issue and we want to go after grant funding or other source of funding to, to build it, that would be the time that we would do it. But for the foreseeable future, I don't see us widening that, that road unless it's developed.
Thanks.
Jose?
Answer the right of way we're talking about, it's just Locan because it looks like Shaw is already taken care of, right?
Yes.
So Shaw, the Shaw side of that property is taken care of, but, so we would, we would try to buy the right of way now?
Well, the, the development fees have enough funding in the, in the fund to, to carry that cost if we chose to do so.
And that could be the trade, like, like a trade, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if we bought the property from her, we'd pay her the cash from the fund and then she would have what she needs to...
To connect.
To connect, yeah.
And, and it would be that lower figure of...
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
And that's all the city would...
She, actually, we would probably purchase a logical amount of right of way that would allow us to construct what we need when we do, so it, the amount that we pay her now would be significantly more than seventeen thousand.
And that strawberry field is part of that, her, her land?
Yeah.
So, her house is right in the middle of that?
Yes.
That vacant, that, that sort of, that... And would, would the water come from Locan or would it come from?
Uh, we, we thought that it would be shorter and easier for it to come from Locan. She's indicating that she thinks it's going to, there are going to be less obstructions if she comes from Shaw, so it can come from either side.
Okay, so...
Okay. Bob? Mike, how much is the estimated construction? You, I know you gave her some construction companies for her to contact, but do we kind of know a rough estimate?
Yeah, she's indicated that she got, I think, a quote from De Young for around $10,000. I think she said to one of our staff members earlier today that she found another contractor that could do it for half that, so it's, it's just a matter of finding the contractor she wants.
Okay. But that's lower than what I was expecting, so... Wouldn't it also be better coming from Locan so that way you don't have to rip up Shaw? From a, or, or are there already stub outs ready so that way? Shaw's built out, so that's why I'm, I'm wondering.
Yeah, Shaw's built out and I don't recall, I forgot to look it up, whether there are stubs already coming from Shaw. I don't think there are, but I, I would need to check that.
So, if there aren't, we would have to dig it all up again and then, I, I don't like that as much just because Shaw's so heavily traveled and every time we cut into it...
Right.
Yeah. The, the structure's not as strong.
Our recommendation would be to go to Locan, yeah.
And then, whatever is hooked up, will it be required where potentially in the future, if it ever develops into, I, I don't know what's there, but I'm, I'm assuming single family, where it can accommodate whatever the current zoning is? Current as in the general plan zoning for it? Will, will it be that where it, it'll be able to accommodate or is it just so that it can supply for the current home?
It'll be just enough to supply the current home.
So, if and when a developer does purchase from her and build, they may have to get a bigger pipe, is that?
They would have to probably abandon this service and install...
Install.
A pipe at wherever the street comes in off of Locan.
Okay. And, how much is it roughly if we purchased the right of way?
How much were, did you do an estimate on that? Well, I, I think we looked at some rough numbers, but I think it's going to be more than double what she needs to do the work. It's probably going to be in the $50,000 range just for us to get a logical amount of right of way so that when we need to do something, we actually can.
Okay. All right. And the financing is with us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Sorry, Mike. If, your, your right of way estimate now is based on sort of what we think. Is there anything that would change what you would purchase now so that in five years or 25 or whatever it is that you might say, oh gosh, we didn't need all of that or we need more? Or is it a fairly predictable calculation given the plans for Locan?
We would get enough width so that we could install the curb and gutter and have enough room to grade behind that in case there's a grade difference and nothing more.
Okay.
So, we would, we would need that, that at a minimum. As far as the width and the responsibility for the construction and supplying the right of way behind that, it would be whoever develops that, that parcel.
Okay. Thanks, thanks.
I, I have a question about the, this is, if it's run, it'll be a single family line, correct? Single family residence line?
Yes, yes.
If, if it develops later, they're either going to have to, one, either abandon that line or retrofit it to bring in more water, correct? That if they, if they come from that particular stub out?
Yes, yes.
Would we be advisable to, to maybe make it larger, to take it to the, to the furthest terminus of where, where the curb would be so that we don't have to cut Locan? Or would, we're not going to, where it's going to develop, so I, and I'm, I'm just trying to anticipate not wanting to cut the street again.
So, I think Locan has been there for a while. It's probably going to be a number of years before we actually come in and widen it. Most of the construction's going to occur on that east side of the road.
Right.
And it's going to be time to rehab that street or do something at a later date anyway, so I, I don't think it's worthwhile and we, and we don't know anything about the location.
Right. And, and if we, if we were to come to terms with the purchase of the easement, we wouldn't do anything with that until development paid its way, correct?
We would, we would not do anything until the either development happens on that parcel or we have funding for a street widening project that we would like to do and neither are in the, in the horizon right now.
Right. So, I, I guess where I'm, where I'm going is in the event that, that a, an agreement could be made, their life really wouldn't change other than the fact that, that piece of land doesn't technically belong to them anymore, but we're not going to be doing anything with it. So, things wouldn't really change for them and would that be an accurate statement?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Bob? Is putting a lien on the property ever an option? Is that something we don't want to get into where one day if it ever sells, we get it back that way or is that something we don't want to do? In other words, we, we'll, you know, provide it, but it becomes a lien on the home so that way she doesn't pay, but in the end we'll get something and even if we put interest on it as well, so that way there's no money out from her, but then we'll get it potentially?
Well, I, I think that, that's something that we have not entertained before. Again, I don't, I think it sets a precedent that we have to think about before we jump into doing something like that and the, the property owner's paying for the cost of providing the service. They're essentially paying their way just like other developers are. So, I don't, legally, I, I suppose we could. That's a question for David, but...
I mean, there, you can, we've done it in other contexts for deferring certain things, but never in this context. I think it'd be pretty unusual because they have to pay for the water service. It's just a little, be unusual here. I think it's technically possible. We'd have to explore that option.
Jose?
Mike, I drove the intersection there at Locan and Shaw and there's a relatively new fence right on that intersection and that, on that property. So, if we bought that right of way, would that fence need to be moved to the east to the new property line, to the new right of way line?
Ideally, yes, but that's, that'll be part of...
That's when we can then discuss it later. Doesn't have to happen overnight.
Right.
Okay. Any other? Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Mike, I noticed that it looks like just a quarter mile away from the, I'll call it the petitioner's, uh, property is a ponding basin. It is Locan and Barstow. I don't know what the name of that ponding basin is. Are you familiar with what I'm referring to? I can show you a map.
Yeah.
Okay. The, um, do you know if, being just a quarter mile away from her property, whether that ponding basin, would it be logical that that's actually feeding into the aquifer that she's drawing from?
Yeah, it, I mean, it's a common aquifer throughout the city, so yes. I don't know how well that particular basin percolates or, or whether it's full enough of the year for it to, to be effective, but, but yes, it, it would go into her aquifer.
Is the idea behind having a ponding basin not just for flood control, but to actually replenish the aquifer? Would you say that?
Yes.
And who is it that put that, or required that that ponding basin be placed there? Was that us or was that the Metropolitan Flood Control District or?
That's Flood Control District.
Okay. And then, that is a requirement generally that we put in place when there's going to be some pavement that's going to be consuming some of the, the land that would generally percolate on its own?
Um, yeah, it, it, the, the basin is sized according to the amount of runoff that's going to occur based on the amount of density and, and land coverage there, there will be in the area that, that goes to that basin.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike.
And based on my experience, that ponding basin does percolate very well. It's a cross red bank elementary and, and I just, for the record, I want to say that I live close to that property to probably in question, but further, further enough away that I, I don't have a conflict, so...
Lynn? Trying to find a, like a construct in my mind to how we might, how to make this work. Is, is the property owner, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Nikki. Is, may I call you Nikki? Is Nikki, is the, is the point that all of the development around there is causing this decline in water, so the city has some obligations, the wrong word, but I just said it, so some obligation to sort of resolve this situation or are they not related issues? The water declining just because that's what's happening in this part of Clovis? I mean, I'm trying to figure out the nexus or is it just simply a lending kind of a transaction here? A borrowing lending question here?
I think it's more of a lending, but as far as the depletion of, yeah, yeah, I think what you're asking is, is the development in the area causing reduced recharge into the aquifer and, and causing an impact to the well? Yeah, it, it, there's probably some of that, but as development occurs, there's also wells taken out of production, so there's some counteracting effects. So, it's really hard to say whether it is positively having an effect on, on how much recharge there is. In general, the, the aquifer is lowering over time, as we know.
And maybe the other side of it, another, the other way to ask the question is, have we, we have done this on other occasions, financed, water, pipe, well, et cetera?
Yes.
Five times, 100 times, somewhere in the middle?
It's a low number, five, 10 times in the past, as, in as many years, maybe, maybe less.
And are those arrangements like this, like over 10 years, then reduce interest in financing the cost or is this kind of exceptionally, we're going to just charge you for the slice where your house is, which is what I think you're suggesting here?
The policy, the code allows for us to base the calculation on the amount of land that's being developed. So, we, we looked at the aerials and we, within the parameters of the code, made the, the amount of land that we're charging on in the front footage along Locan as small as we could.
Which is just where the house is currently, not the whole seven and a half acres.
Correct, yeah.
And have we done that anywhere else?
Yes, we have.
And have we done any other arrangements where we have sort of bought right of way in advance of the need and that kind of exchange?
We, you know, we haven't done that before. That's kind of a, a new one, but we recognize that we do eventually need some of the land for the street on Locan, so we, we asked the question.
But you indicated that Nikki, so maybe when you talk Nikki, you could say why you don't want to do that, when the mayor invites you up, but I would, I'd be interested that that wasn't an option for you. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Bob? Mike, do you have a number for how much it would cost to re-drill a well since she has the right to do that? Do you have those numbers?
I, I think she may have looked into that and she may have a number, but I think it probably at least as much as the total cost of, of the, the fees plus the construction for the new water service, maybe more.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike. No other questions for staff. I will open this to the public and member of the public in chambers which to address the council on this. Ma'am, do you want to talk to us?
Thank you for taking time and talking about this matter. The point is, I've been...
Ma'am, if you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I, okay.
Thank you.
This is Nikki, Chiampanzand and my address is 303 Shaw in Clovis. I'm right on Shaw and Locan. This has been going since the pandemic started and I've been under a lot of stress and now sitting here and seeing they deny, they want to deny it. So, maybe it was better off for me from the beginning, they knew what they are talking about because I requested to drill a well when I went to the city and they said, no, you cannot. I said, let me re-drill. They said, no, you cannot. And after some time, they contacted me and they said, you know, and I told them about the grandfather clock, they said, no, you cannot, doesn't matter, you cannot drill a well and that was it. So, every person who I called about drilling, that was the first thing they asked me, does the city allow you? Of course, I have to say no, right? But after a long time, they said, okay... But after a long time, they said, "Okay, you know, because you had this property prior to ninety-three, you can drill a well." And then, first they said you can re-drill, and then they said, a couple of days after, I received an email, "You can drill." So, I've been going through all these stressful time, just because of, I think, city staff. I'm sorry I have to say that. I really apologize. But this is what I want to tell you. So, if they can waive it, fine. But if not, the cost of drilling a well, it's less than what the city wants for the water.
Thank you, Nikki. I, I, I'm sure that staff didn't purposefully mislead you, and I, and I know this is stressful.
Yes.
And, and, um, hopefully, we can come to an arrangement where you'll have consistent water that you don't have to treat, and we can do that. Um, is, anybody have any questions for Nikki?
Von, help me understand you, Nikki. Are, are you trying to say that now that you can drill, you prefer that option? So that you-
I don't prefer, I don't prefer to drill a well, because that's costly too. But if I drill a well, I don't know how far we get to water.
Mm-hmm.
Because they recommended three hundred feet, but, mm, to keep the cost lower, I recommended to go with two hundred. But it may be five years from now, it goes dry again, I don't know. But connecting to the city water, it's more convenient for me. And in other hand, I have to pay monthly for the water, which I don't pay when I have a well. You know, I can, but right now, not I'm going to cry here for my landscape, but my house looks like in the middle of a desert, which was very green like five months ago. And I'm not blaming the city staff for this. They didn't, they didn't do it purposely, but it happened during this pandemic. So, when I went there, they didn't have a staff. They gave me a phone number, I called, nobody answered, nobody returned my call. Not I'm blaming them, they did it to me purposely. But this is what happened. So, I don't know, if you guys have any question, I'd be more than welcome to take your question.
So, the option of sort of the one hundred dollar, hu- one hundred and forty dollars a month for the connection fees, you don't want that at all, then?
That was very good, because they told me the interest rate would be point two five, which I really appreciate. I got very excited first, I thought, "Okay, I do this." But then, after I sat down and I calculated everything, plus the construction costs, and the one forty-two, and the water bill, something in the vicinity of five hundred dollars, which it'll be hard for me to do that.
Okay.
So, that's why I thought, if the fees waived, then I paid the construction, and I called the construction company to get an estimate. Bran- Brandon from beyond, that was just a ballpark, he told me, ten thousand dollars. And he said maybe more, but there are things that I don't want to talk about here, in the public, but the offer was not that, like, for me, it was for their own benefit. But I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Let, let me also just ask you about the offer to purchase the right-of-way, and, and share with us why that is also not an option for you?
I always have compliance with the city. They bought my property before, this is not the first time. But at this point, I, I don't think I can do that, because the pressure that I had, I'm afraid if I don't make a right decision. My mind has been focused on to get water and be able to live like a, you know, any resident in Clovis. But if possible, I'd really be happy. If not, I probably, not I want to do that, but I probably go drill a well.
But, I mean, one benefit I do see with the right-of-way is, if and when, if we ever secure funding prior to development, we can then build that out and actually have gutter there, and the full street will be built out on your western side of your property. So, that's-
But as Mike said, Mike, Mr. Harrison said, it's not going to be now, it's whenever.
Yes, that is correct. It's just that it gives that option for us to move potentially.
Maybe, maybe, maybe I can wait and deal that whenever the time occurs. There is no point of doing that.
Thank you, Nikki.
For me to make a big decision.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Nikki, I, I, I just want to kind of go a little bit on what Von was talking about. You have the right to, to not sell your property, sell your property, drill your well, not drill your well, these are, these are decisions that you make for yourself.
Right.
In the event that you, you opted to sell the city that right-of-way, short of your property being sold to a developer for development, your life wouldn't change, other than the fact that, that property is now part of the city's right-of-way. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm-
I understand what you're saying.
And, and, and the precedent that I think that, that staff is concerned about, and I'm also concerned about, is we waive fees for a wonderful person, and the next person comes in and says, "I'm wonderful too, please waive my fees." And then someone says, "Well, you don't like me, because you don't think I'm as wonderful as the next person, now I'm going to sue you for not doing that." It, it, it's a slippery slope for us to get on. Um, and that, those, a- and this is actually probably something we were going to discuss amongst ourselves, so I figured this is just as well, just a good a time. Um, Nikki, is there anything else you'd like to, to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other person inside the chamber? Yes, go ahead, Von.
I forgot one. How about the option of a lien on your home? Yes, no?
Option of what?
Giving you the money, but we put a lien on your home?
No.
So, that way in the future, when you sell-
Because I already have lien on my house.
Okay.
I already have a lien on my house. And another thing is, I don't know, there are things that I don't want to talk here, but you guys bringing it up, and so I have to tell. Since this happened, I had, I don't know how, but I had people who offered me to buy the house, not the property, the house, to move it. And then I had offered to, they wanted to buy the property. And of course, everybody, three developers have approached me, and one person approached me to buy the house, you know, the building, to take it out and take it to the mountain. How all this happened during this difficult time, I don't know. So, I feel a lot of pressure right now, and I don't want to make that decision. This is my retirement.
And Lynn is correct, you don't have, you don't have to, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other person in the chambers wish to discuss this item with council? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
We have none on the web. Mr. Clerk, did we have any public comments on this item? We do not. Okay, I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion and action.
I guess the question I have is, if you're, if you're able to drill the well, can we just, uh, I mean, we could vote on this, but we could just, can we just withdraw the item if, I don't know, it feels like the rules are different now? Your point is if we're going to deny it, or, or, am I, I mean, maybe we don't even need to take this action, if she, if we were not clear in our communication, if she can build well, uh, drill a well, can she just drill a well, and we don't need to do anything?
Yes, you could take no action. You don't have to take any action tonight on this item. It's brought to you to give you the option of waiving the fees, but you could also give direction, not take any action tonight.
Okay, all right.
Von, don't, Von. I wanted to ask Andy, were there any CDBG funding that potentially, if she is in that income category and/or census track, where, because there's home improvement, um, and it, is there anything that potentially can fit with any of those funds?
Uh, that would be income dependent and also asset dependent.
Okay.
So, most likely not, based on the location of the home and the worth of the home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Well, I mean, um-
Or lack thereof?
Well, I, I would, I'm not comfortable waiving the fees. I think if we start down that path, we will waive them a hundred more times. And, and so, it's, it's not anything to do with you at all. So, if you can drill the well, I would move that we just withdraw this item, communicate to Nikki that she can drill her own will, and you can go on and do your thing, and you don't need to do any of this. That's what I would, that's what I'm hearing, sort of where we're going. If someone wants to make a motion to approve the fees, that won't work. But I would make a motion that we just withdraw this item, direct her to drill a well, allow her to drill a well on her own property, and call it a day, that's what I would do.
I will second that motion, and also, leave, as an option that if you want to come back to us, come back to us, and, and I would tell staff that this option, what you, what you proposed to us as far as how we proposed to sister, is still on the table, with, with right-of-way purchasing and loans and all those things, if she, if she would choose to do so. But, but withdraw the, but I concur with, with Lynn. I'll second her motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed unanimously. But ma'am, we, uh, do you understand the direction that you're going here? You can, you can, you can drill a well. Um, the, we, we've pulled back this item. We, we didn't, we didn't say we're not going to waive your fees, but we didn't say we would either. We're just withdrawing this motion, giving you, uh, the ability to do what you think you need to do. Um, staff was still here to work with you on this item. If at some point you decide, "I don't really want to drill a well, because maybe two hundred's not good enough, what if in five years it, you know, I have to do it again?" If you want to connect with, with city water, staff will assist you. Um, could a waiver fee, a fee, a waiver of fees come before the council again? They could, I, I think if you're taking a temperature of the room, the temperature's not good for that one. But, um, this, this allows you the latitude of going forth and making it your, your best decision, because we certainly don't want you to feel pressured or manhandled by the city of Clovis.
My, my concern was more the waiver, waiver, waiving of the fees is not on the table. What, what, what is on the table is, is what we offered.
Right. So, we, we, we stand, we stand here to help you with the exception of waiving fees. Okay, and we're going to move on to item number nineteen. Consider request, oh, excuse me, we did that. Item twenty, workshop, where the city of Clovis conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on the ongoing city operations during the COVID-nineteen state of emergency is declared by the federal government, state of California, county of Fresno, and city of Clovis, and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. A is consider approvals resolution adopting emergency ordinance, emergency order, twenty twenty dash sixteen, assisting local developers in Clovis by suspending the expiration of specific land use entitlements. Renee Mathis is our presenter, Renee.
Good afternoon, actually, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Staff tonight is requesting that council adopt emergency order twenty twenty dash sixteen, which will suspend the expiration of specific land use entitlements. Due to the pandemic and its many impacts, still some which are unknown on residential, commercial, and industrial projects, developers have really had to rethink their plans and delay some of their projects. Because of these impacts, developers have requested relief on the expiration, um, has, have requested suspension on their approvals, so their times do not expire. And they are also in support of tonight's, uh, order. You should have a letter from the BIA showing support of tonight's order. By suspending the expiration of these specified land use entitlements, the city is able to prevent further project delays, failures, as well as adverse health and safety impacts in our community. And those impacts could be seen in the form of a delay in commercial developments, residential developments, um, blighted properties not being turned over, loss of jobs and revenues. The order specifically allows an automatic suspension that will expire one year beyond the termination of the city's declared local emergency for five specific types of entitlements. These entitlements include tentative tract maps, parcel maps, site plan reviews, conditional use permits, and AUPs. We currently have a ninety-three of these specific types of entitlements that have been approved but haven't been executed. And once one of these permits is executed, then that term that runs with those entitlements is kind of null and void, because they're moving forward with the project. So, the execution would come in the form of a building permit being issued, um, construction activity happening, or the actual use permit, the allowed use being utilized. At present, um, if any of the current entitlements, let's say council chooses not to adopt this order, what would happen is, as the time extends on these entitlements, individual developers would be required to come back and ask for extensions, which in some cases could be approved at the department head level. And in other cases, when they've utilized all of their extensions, they could be required to come back before planning commission. That takes time, and in some cases, it, it, it causes them to have to pay some additional fees. So, in order to avoid any more delays already than what the development community has been faced, staff is recommending approval of the attached resolution and the adoption of emergency order twenty twenty dash sixteen that will suspend the expiration of these specified entitlements, again, for one year after the termination of the city's declared local emergency, which will thereby minimize further project delays and potential expenses for these local developers. That concludes staff's recommendation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Von?
Renee, help me understand that expiration date, okay? So, it, it is not valid for, okay, the, this order is valid one year from when it terminates? Or, how, how does that work? Give me, give me a specific example, or two examples, so that way I really understand how that timeline works.
Sure. So, with each of the five entitlements that I've identified, they all have different terms that they're valid. I think the easiest one is a site plan review. Once that is approved by staff, it is valid for one year. After that one year, a developer could come back and at staff level could ask for two six-month extensions. So, that gives them a total of twenty-four months. After the twenty-four months, the developer would be required, without this order, to then go before the planning commission and make a case as to why that project or that SPR would need to be further extended for another period of time, a year. This order will take any given SPR, let's say we've got an SPR that's been approved, and it's in its initial year for six months. If this order is approved, it freezes that term at six months, and that six month, the remaining six months under the original approvals doesn't start up again until our local emergency is terminated, and then one year beyond it. So, we're really giving the development community a decent amount of time to get their projects back on track.
So, it, it just freezes everything? It's not for development that has reached that planning commission stage to get an automatic one year?
Right, it, it's to freeze them right now, so they don't have to go back to the planning commission. So, each of these entitlements have different terms, and of the ninety-three that are currently approved, they're in various stages of their existing, uh, term. We've, uh, created a list of all of these ninety-three entitlements. We know exactly where they are in their current approval process, based on council's direction tonight. We'll basically freeze that expiration, or the term of those entitlements, so they don't continue to run, and then it'll be reactivated once the local emergency is terminated, plus one year after. So, it's a pretty decent amount of time.
And so, David, what is, when does an order like this terminate? When we declare the emergency over? Or when we have to actually come back and also declare this order over? Is all in the same, with the two separate?
The way we set it up is when we, uh, emergency order, we come back, the states, emergencies are over, the states lifted their emergency order- the state's, emergencies are over, the states lifted their emergency order, we come back, lift our order or lifts automatically. Then the way we built this is for one year. We already built this in. We'll keep this order in place. We may have to come back and do some kind of confirmation at that time, but right now it's making it very clear what the process is. So the only something we'd have to look at later is because the emergency is lifted now, does this order go away or not? And we might have to look at that, but we'll be ready for that. We'll anticipate all of those issues. But right now it's pretty clear. So until the state lifts the emergency, at which point we will lift our emergency most likely, unless there's still some reason for a regional emergency, then, then the one-year clock, then another year and then the clock would keep, start running again.
So, once again, so it's when we release our local emergency?
Yes.
That's when, like, one year starts?
Yes.
Okay. And?
I can't really envision the state lifting their order and us still having an order, although it's possible. It's still like a real, a big region, regional problem still. But most likely it would all happen around the same time.
But it could also go the other way, can it? Where the state still has an order, but we, because the economy is doing well, they're building well again, where we can release this order? Or does it fall on that declaration of an emergency declaration?
We could. I mean, there's, there could be a reason for why we don't need a local emergency anymore, but the state emergency still exists. I'm not sure what the reasons would be or maybe we just don't need any extra authority. That's possible.
I saw us, or I remember we took some orders out even though the emergency is still in place. I'd like to have it that way instead of just when there's still a local emergency. Because we felt, oh, you know, we need to take away the order of the parks because, you know, the emergency is still there. We felt it was beneficial to our residents. So the way it's written here, it's when the termination of declared local emergency. That makes it where it may be longer than necessary. And so I, I don't know, you know, we may give that a thought where, you know, the economy is doing well, you know, we need to get them moving, in other words, and so, but?
And don't forget, these orders can be changed anytime by the city council. They're not locked in stone. So any of these emergency orders can be changed. You can come back and change it anytime. But right now, this seems to be the best course of action based on, I think, what planning has worked with the BIA. Seems to give the most certainty to everybody, but if things change fundamentally, we can come back and you can, the council can actually modify.
So do we need that language in number one of page 712 then?
It's in every one of our orders. It's standard language at the back of the order that all these orders can be changed.
Because at the beginning it just says, shall be suspended until one year after termination of the city's declared local emergency. And so that sounds like someone, if we gave this order, can come back. If we gave the order to go, we're going to suspend 2020-16 going, hey, the emergency is not over. Why are you suspending it? So, I mean, we can do anything we want, but the language here is pretty clear, it seems to me, that should we add an extra line? Or when the order is suspended?
Well, in every one of these orders, in every one of these orders, the last part of the order says, this order should remain in effect, the order itself, till it's terminated, repealed, amended or modified by the director or the council. So every one of our emergency orders has that language in it.
Okay.
Just so we can deal with changing situations.
Councilman, one thing we want to, one of the reasons for adopting this order was to provide some stability and comfort to lenders and corporate offices and such that are financing the development project. I think as City Attorney has said, we could rescind any order, but we want to be very careful about adding language into this that might add uncertainty. Because the whole idea of this is to give them the comfort knowing that the projects they've invested in or are going to invest in are going to be valid for a certain period past this. So I think we, we want to be very careful about taking that away because the whole intent of this is to give those lenders and give those corporate offices that level and bondholders the comfort to know that they want to continue to invest in the development of Clovis.
Lynn, I tell you, did you turn your light on earlier?
Nope.
Okay. Jose?
I think Luke kind of answered my question. So who initiated this? The development industry or did we, did we see the need and then developed ourselves?
It was close. However, the BIA and our community has requested that we use this. And then they were. What the city was going to be able to do to help extend some of the existing entitlements that were in place, knowing that they've had to delay some projects just due to the unforeseen impacts of the pandemic.
And, and they did demonstrate, they showed empirical evidence or proof that they are going to have impacts, like, did we see that? Did they demonstrate that? Yeah, there, people are, we know people are losing jobs. We know that for sure. But are they losing sales? Are they, did they show that, that the market for new houses are going down and other things? And what Luke brought up, that the lenders are feeling uncomfortable lending them the money to build the homes and therefore those projects aren't getting done anyway. So they, did they demonstrate that there was in fact some empirical need for, for some help?
Right. So they did come to us with the items where they had current approvals, SPRs, and they were approaching that 24 months. And due to the lack of ability to get out in front of it, they were going to have to go back with an extension. So I think that's what triggered it. Also piggybacking on what Luke just said, they were also demonstrating with the uncertainty, their lenders were tending to pull back, which provided more inability for them to proceed if they weren't able to start their projects now without a known extension on some of these approvals. That was the information they provided to us.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, what is the potential financial loss of the city by doing this? Do we have that?
We don't have an impact. These are approvals that have already gone through the process. They're entitlements that have been approved. So we don't lose out with the exception of if they were to default and let these expire and then they didn't do the project, that would be an impact to us. So if it was for commercial or residential, they may not move forward with their project. So down the road, it could provide an impact to what we had planned to occur as part of that development. It does provide a savings to some degree in time for the developer in trying to minimize the delay in the moving forward with their project with this kind of extension, with this suspension put into place because then they're not having to come back and be either before our department requesting an extension or potentially planning commission and/or city council if it was something that made its way up to city council.
Thanks, Renee. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member of the public in chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk, do we get any public comments other than the letter from the BIA? No. Okay. I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion or for action.
Just a point of clarification. This letter from Old Town Clovis is regarding what item then?
That was from a prior agenda.
So not anything on our agenda tonight or not this because it's an entitlement, nothing?
Has nothing to do with it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion that we adopt emergency order 2020-16.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I just wanted to say, I appreciate planning, even thinking and developing something. Andy's been doing it with the businesses and for us to sort of lead the way also in this area. So excellent work. Thank you.
Next item is a receiving file status update on CARES Act and other COVID-19 specific revenues and related expenditures. Jay is our presenter. Jay?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we just wanted to do a quick status update on the CARES Act and the other COVID-specific revenues and expenditures. A couple of you had asked some questions on where we were as it relates to the revenues and what we were spending the money on. So I went back and did the best I could on giving you an update. So our portion of the CARES Act allocation was 1.47 million. The categories were varied on what we could spend the money on, but the state has chosen to really push on this category three, which is payroll expenses. And what they've done is basically say that all public safety salary expenditures are presumed to be substantially dedicated. And what that means for Clovis is that if we can show that we have public safety payroll, we can, that's the easiest category to claim, the 1.47 million is spent. Basically, that's around two payrolls for our sworn officers and firemen. There is some questions from some of the cities, including Clovis, is that if the federal money is really more restricted than that and the state steps out there and says that, but we have to backtrack on that at some point, that we would want to be able to show those expenditures were in fact spent so we wouldn't have to give any of that money back. So what each of the departments have done is they've kind of taken a look at where they're spending money from March through December, which is the period that kind of the CARES Act refers to. So the fire department is currently spending about 18% of their time on COVID-related matters. So Chief Panansky is going to spend approximately 1.5 million during this period if he keeps that rate of calls. The police department is responding to about 3% of calls. So if the patrol is headed out there, 3% of the time, they're spending about $400,000 on salaries and related benefits during this period. The personnel cost for the COVID, this is basically quarantine, you know, at home sick, those types of costs, we've spent about $300,000. And lastly, the EOC deployment and staffing that we've been doing and are going to do through December, if we add up everything else, we're at about $166,000. So the take back from this is basically that the state has passed through 1.47 million to Clovis. We in turn plan on spending at least 2.4 million. The actual expenditures will surely be more. We have a lot of costs that are still being incurred or unknown at this point. This is just our best guess of ballpark where we think we could safely document that we're spending the dollars for CARES Act. So, yeah.
Shay, the police, what would a police department call for COVID-19 related be? Just a first response to a call for medical aid and PD was, I mean, what would be a COVID-19 related call for PD?
I asked the police department to basically tell me how many calls were coming into dispatch that were referencing in some cases COVID, whether that was somebody ill, not feeling well or anything that they could mark the box basically that this was COVID-related or there was a risk there. So at that point, they're basically telling me that approximately 3% of their calls have some element of COVID in it.
Angry customers not wanting to wear a mask, having a scene in the store?
Yeah, that very well could be with the 3%.
Okay, thank you.
So outside of the CARES Act a little bit, but still related is Andy retooled some of the CDBG programs to basically allocate some of that funding in a couple of different areas. So the seniors program, we reallocated $241,000. And what that program is, just for reference, is it provides one meal a week to at-risk seniors. We started the program July 24th and we've surpassed 7,000 meals. So when you take the food and staff costs, we're approximately halfway through the program on July 24th. Basically comes out to around $15 per meal delivered to seniors in need. The other part of CDBG is emergency house payment program. So these are those folks that are having trouble with their mortgage or their rent and are reaching out to the city for assistance. Since, and this program as well is also very popular. Since July 15th, there has been 16 applications approved and we've spent almost $80,000. That basically represents approximately $5,000 worth of help per application. A few other revenues that we've brought in that aren't quite substantial, but noteworthy nonetheless, is through fire department, FEMA, they've successfully submitted $105,000 worth of reimbursement. At 75%, we'll get approximately $75,000 of that back. There was a firefighter's grant at the very beginning for $10,000. That was just presumed that it was for PPE at the very beginning. Bureau of Justice to grant 55,000, state-type scenario where everything centered around COVID. And then lastly, the EDD Unemployment CARES Act. Basically, we're incurring unemployment on a quarterly basis. The state is reimbursing us for half of that unemployment currently. So this last quarter, which was basically inception of like March 15th through June 30th, they've notified us that we'll be getting back about $53,000. Every dollar helps. So just to kind of summarize where we're at on all things COVID and CARES Act, we're basically planning on spending approximately $3 million on COVID-related type expenditures that we can put our finger on and pinpoint. There's only approximately $2 million of various revenue sources that I just basically went through with you. So right now, we're basically showing somewhere in the neighborhood of $900,000 that the city will be on the hook for fighting this that aren't funded by any kind of program that made it down to us. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions?
Do have a question.
Questions for staff? Lynn?
Jay, is there any, Fresno County got a substantial amount of money. I don't know how much, 60 million, 80 million, a lot. Any of that money, we are in the county of Fresno, any of that money eligible for cities like Clovis? Or is that all designated for rural areas or?
My understanding right now is that that money is designated for the county and how they want to spend it. We don't have any current availability to access those funds. The City of Fresno and the county both have very opposite problems in that they have a lot of money that they're having to account for that they haven't spent and they're in their different lens than we are. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't build some kind of partnership with the county, but right now there's not any of that dollars that I'm aware of.
The thing about PPE or if there were testing in Clovis or I mean, any way we could access any of those county funds to offset some of our own expenses here? Not that you've seen so far.
Not that I've seen so far, but that doesn't mean that's not coming. You know, there is a lot of money still coming from the state. The governor, we were on the news again today, not in a good way, but you know, he's planning on sending another 52 million, you know, kind of Central Valley area to help, you know, whether that's increased tracing or testing. But that money, I don't plan on seeing it directly.
If I may?
Rob?
Jay, can you go back to the slide that showed the unemployment insurance? Well, I know it's a small amount of money, but I'm just trying to figure out where is it that we have been spending money on uninsurance, excuse me, unemployment insurance claims?
Well, basically what that was, was that wave of part-timers and folks that we sent home at the very beginning of this. The first thing they did was went out on unemployment.
I see, okay.
That is the bill from the state on our unemployment claims.
So we didn't lay off any permanent full-time employees, but there were some temporary employees?
There was, there was, you know, 20 to 30 people, I had three of them in my department that we sent home immediately and their first response was unemployed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes?
Any other questions for Jay? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member of the public in chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk, any comments sent then?
No.
This is a receiving file. Let's take a look here. We are at city manager comments. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for the unemployed, we still have several of our part-timers with shutting down the rec center and the senior center. That's a large workforce of part-time people that are laid off and they won't be coming back till who knows when. So they're still collecting unemployment. So rather than city manager comments, I'll just kind of run through some of the latest COVID update numbers. These are the numbers we get from the county showing new cases or positive cases reported in Clovis zip codes by week. As always, the last week is not complete data, so you can kind of disregard that last bar. But as you can see, the month of July was a huge spike and it continues to go up. This shows the number of cases by community. And if this was a horse race, we'd be doing well, but we would, we liked being down at the bottom. We are now up to the second on this chart for the number of cases. Keep in mind that Fresno is not on this chart because their numbers are so high that it kind of skews the whole vertical axis. And most of the other cities, all the other cities on there are significantly smaller than Clovis. But we are, we are showing a higher level of infection than we were just a week ago, a month ago. So it has spiked. This is the last bit of data I want to show you. This is the Fresno County hospitalizations. The state is from the state. The blue is total hospitalizations. The solid blue line is confirmed COVID cases. The dotted blue line is if you. The dotted blue line is if you include the suspected COVID cases that are in the hospital. And then the red is the ICU. Same situation there where the solid red line is the confirmed COVID ICU cases, and the dotted red line is the suspected ICU. And they've sort of leveled off, at least in the last week or so, a couple of weeks, but this, you know, this is a very closely watched level, because this tells us how well-prepared we are to respond to another surge or anything like that. So that's the data for this week. We continue to operate, and I'm open for any questions.
Vaughn, Luke, on that last chart, what's the total number of beds, including the convention centers? So that way, at least we know if we're at that capacity, and even ICU too. Do we kind of, not need it today, but that would help, so that way, at least we know, at least we're spending the curve?
The ICU, I know off the top of my head, there's 149 licensed ICU beds in Fresno County. However, as Councilmember Astrid pointed out a couple of weeks ago, not all of those beds are staffed, and the healthcare facilities don't necessarily have the staff to fill all those beds. The total number of hospital beds, and I don't know if you know that number off the top of your head, it's significantly higher. I want to say it's up around 1,500. I can get you that number, but it's significantly higher.
Second, okay, thank you. Second question is regards to that article, Luke. It wasn't an order, right? Where, the way it was reported, it seemed like you put an order that all workers have to return, but I don't see any orders. Is it, it's not an order or order, is this?
It's not an emergency order, and that kind of, I think it was a slow news week. So the reality is, is we had had, you know, more than, a majority of our workers have been here every day since March. So when things first started, we had some people working from home and on remote telecommuting so that they, get them out of the office, while we made some improvements to the way our office is set up and set up provisions for social distancing. Probably a month ago, we brought back the majority of those folks. So we were down to 10 to 15 max that were still working part-time from home, some full-time from home, but most of them part-time. And just out of equity, I directed the department heads, I sent out an internal email, it wasn't an emergency order, I sent out an internal email saying, okay, we've got the social distancing in place, everybody can come back to work and do it in a safe manner, let's bring everybody back starting August 1st. And that apparently didn't go over well with everybody, and the B picked up on it, my internal email was given to the B. They did a very fair and equitable article, I think, on the issue, just pointing out that we are following all of the county and state guidelines, and it's not an emergency order, it was just, as our management right, we told them, okay, time to come back into the office.
But I wish they would have given the numbers you gave, where it's only affect, it's only 10 people, 15 people we're trying to bring back, and it's not like, you know, over 50% were at home, and now we're forcing 200 or 300 people back. And so it, it made for, yeah, and looking at some of the comments, it just seems like, I wish the reporter would have gotten more facts from us, so that way, it would have been much more accurate to what you stated than to what was put in.
I think all the facts were provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Lynn?
I just would reinforce, I think, what I asked Shay. I mean, if, we have the third highest case rate in the county. So if there is county funds, if they can't figure out how to spend them, I would try to get in that queue somehow about reimbursement for PPE, or fire, or testing, or Plexiglas, or handwashing stations, or something. But, I mean, we are part of the county, and so I would encourage some, Andy, or somebody checking out if there are any funds available for, I mean, even if it was another million dollars, it would be better than nothing. So I would encourage us to see what we can do.
We will, we will, we will again check with them and see. You know, we have been pursuing every possible funding source we can get on this, and we'll have to see what comes down, but just a thought.
Any other questions for Luke? Seeing none, council comments. Bob?
I would like to start my council comments with this first word. John? Thank you. So what you have in front of you is just something that kind of caught my attention. This was a photograph that was taken at 7:30 in the morning on Sunday. And this was the pedestrian counter at the trail, the Dry Creek Trail, right there at Clovis and Knees. And by 7:30 in the morning, we had 28 bicyclists and 144 walkers that morning. But the, what also struck me was that, you know, I wish I'd kind of taken this picture halfway through the year, you know, June 30th, but I didn't think to do that. But what struck me is that we've got 104,000, really 105,000 people that have walked by that pedestrian counter. I will also say that when my wife and I walk by it hand-in-hand, it only counts us once, which I think is a good symbolism of how we are, you know, combined as one. So maybe this is a little bit of an undercount. And then also, we have bicyclists at about 59,000. So the, when you add the pedestrians and the bicyclists this year since January 1st, our population plus another third has walked by this one pedestrian counter in, at that Clovis and Knees location. And I think that's a real tribute to how many of our folks have been using it this year, and how popular it is. I know that not, you don't just walk by there one time. I think many people are faithful walkers, and they'll go by there several times, but I think the fact that we've got our population plus an additional third that have walked by that one particular pedestrian counter is a real testament to the right call that the city made in putting together this trail network. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Lynn?
So this, I'm going back to the spirit of peace and hope from Dale's proclamation, and I just, I made a few notes, just so I could kind of stay on track. So I guess I publicly, not I guess, I want to publicly state my deep disagreement for the city's role in Mr. Brettafeld's press conference. I, I was stunned by that participation. So our city participated in a city of Fresno press conference with two council members and a former mayor asking for schools to reopen. And so even though, Mayor, you said you were there as an individual, your mayor title implies otherwise. And your letter to us said, I shouldn't have done it, I should have backed out, but I did it. And I wasn't going to speak, but you did. So I, I feel like the city of Clovis took a stand with two council members that I don't particularly want to align with, and so I feel like I took a stand as an individual council member. You represented me and all of us. So I just, I needed to publicly say that. So we were part of that press conference and berating Fresno Unified, neither of which I don't think is right for our city. So I just, I needed to say that, that, that press conference was in such direct opposition to everything I thought that we believed in. So I, I wanted to say that just publicly, so I said that. I guess my second point is separate but related to the first, and what I wrote down was, was the following. Our council has worked better than most over the last 25 years, for a couple of reasons. We typically don't take positions on issues outside our influence. We typically stay in our lane. We don't take positions telling other agencies what they should or should not do. We try to vet a significant issue with the council before making a public statement or taking a public position. And we value civil discourse and respect for each other. And we have occasionally deviated from these norms. I'm sure I have done it myself, maybe six, seven, eight times over the last 20 years that I've been here, but three times in the last five months. So COVID-19 has been hard on all of us for lots of reasons. So what I would like to ask, and I think Vaughn, when you joined the council, you asked for, is there a set of council norms, guidelines? So what I would like to ask my colleagues, in the spirit of hope and peace and conflict-free existence, maybe when we come back in September, we can have a workshop on council norms. Are those still the things that we value? And what do those look like going forward? Maybe they look different. We have a different makeup of our council. But I just, I would like to have an open conversation about that. So I offer those comments only in the spirit of trying to restore what I think has been lost in the last five months on our council. I've never gotten letters from citizens saying, the ranker that I hear and see on WebExes is, I've never seen that in Clovis. I've never gotten those letters until the last five months. That is not who we are. So I'll conclude there, but I just, I wanted to publicly acknowledge that your, the mayor's presence of that council member was not, wasn't the five of us present, it was not certainly my view. And I'd like to ask that we schedule a council workshop somewhere after we come back, just to talk a bit about norms and guidelines. Thanks.
Vaughn? Here, I am, Renee, can you provide me how much one of those counters costs? Because I have to go all the way to Bob's neighborhood to get counted. And the southeast has so many trails where Jose, Lynn, you know, those, those, Noma Vista. And when I finally got some of the northern folks to come down and walk those trails, they love it a lot more than, so if we can, how much it costs, and I'd be willing to help look for something where that gets counted, because I remember your last report, it didn't have any numbers down there, the number of uses for those trails, because it's harder to count, but let me know. I would love to get into that. Um.
So the cost is around, I believe it's $50,000, and that was determined, it's not a grant, utilizing our master local energy money to actually purchase.
Oh, thank you.
The operation.
Yeah. Wanted to invite the council to a citizens' walk to support law enforcement that will be happening on August 22nd at 9:00 AM. And so I was invited more so for me helping to get citizens from the Mon community, but I thought it would be, I think our Police Department is involved with it as well. But it'll be non-political, just a straight statement. I went to the meeting today, and so they stress, they're getting the Westside churches involved, Pastor Binion, pastor, some of the black pastors involved. They have CHP, sheriffs, Fresno PD, all involved. And so it'll just be from City Hall, walking straight to Courthouse Park, going through Mariposa Mall, that's sort of the intended pathway, so it's easiest pathway. And I think the speeches will, from what I, they said today, will only be stories from individuals of their sacrifice in the line of duty, so it stays away from anything political. So just the work that the men and women in blue have been, have sacrificed for the community. So it's sort of in that vein. Wanted to invite you guys, I'll send, once I get the invitation, I'll send it out to the rest of the council, so that way you can have it. I did attend the invitation from the mayor sent in, not asking us to attend, but just to let us know, on Sunday, the, the sort of walk and prayer for Old Town Clovis. And it was very safe, they pushed distancing and wearing masks and crossing the street safely, breaking up into groups, so that way it wouldn't impede any traffic at all, and praying. So wanted to just thank those who were involved with it, and I think it was Pastor Dwayne from the Word Church in Fresno, he came out and led most of the prayers. So I wanted to share that. Last one, wanted to share with the work that, on the Committee of Housing and Economic Development. I reported a while back regarding AB 1279, it's by Bloom, it's High Opportunity Areas. The league, the committee and the league opposed it unless it was amended, and it was not amended. So there is a, I wanted to leave it up to the council, see what we wanted. There is a letter here that explains why we would oppose it if we chose to go along with the league. Because some of the things are, the AB 1279 would require jurisdictions that are deemed High Opportunity Areas to allow multifamily housing projects in greater height and density than existing zoning and planning documents otherwise would allow. So in other words, there's, there's no map, they will draw a map after this is passed of what those High Opportunity Zones are, and then allow development pretty much by right. And the, even the league's committee opposed it. And so we wanted clarity on what is a High Opportunity Zone. We wanted the map, how it would be updated, how it would be addressed to us. And there's also no environmental review. The league asked for the opportunity to have at least an environmental review, and also allow jurisdictions to create their own plans as the next cycle arena comes about, instead of making this something in which the state is planning for us, where, where we should develop multifamily. So, but I don't have a recommendation for the council, as in, we should write a letter to stand with the league. I'm open either way, it'd just be, see if there's at least three of us who agree, then I appreciate, Andy already, Andy and I already discussed it. Andy's been going to every one of the committee meetings, and so he's prepared a letter if we should move that way. But if we don't, it's also there, the league's going to oppose it already. Just wanted to. Well, we have to?
I think it would just be direction and come back with a letter.
Yeah, if we, yeah. No, if there's three of us, then I'll put this letter on the agenda for us to support, but if there isn't, then there's.
I don't know that we have time to come back, because we aren't having another meeting till September. So I don't know that we have time to come back. This, the league has taken a position on this. This is, I think, consistent with our goals to maintain some local control. If, I think we could do it kind of on a, yeah, let's write a letter.
The city manager can write a letter.
I could, I could, yeah. Oh, okay. Better can, better can.
From Luke, or do we want to do it from the council?
Well, if I can just join in here, because I, it wouldn't be the first time that we have wrote a letter like this, that was consistent with our principles that we've, you know, outlined as a, as a council before. Here, the idea of local control is something that we hold tightly to. This particular bill would remove the local control aspect that we have in the city of Clovis. So I don't think it would be out of line for Drew to sign a letter that shows that we would be opposed to that. I also am of the opinion that a High Opportunity Zone is generally going to be anything within the Clovis Unified School District, if I remember some discussions in the past about what a High Opportunity Zone may look like. So sometimes we have to make decisions, as mayors, I think all of us have known this, that are going to be, that we have to act a little bit quickly on, particularly when it comes to legislation. And as long as it is consistent with what we have indicated our position has been in the past, then I think we just kind of say, yeah, go ahead and sign the letter. So I'm of the opinion that we're not asking anything that Drew, I don't think we're asking anything to Drew to do that's inconsistent with what we've expressed in the past about local control.
I think it means more coming from the council, myself, but I'm open to other people's opinion.
And I have a sample letter that Andy prepared.
Does it need to be publicly noticed so the public can weigh in on a piece of legislation?
If it's just a letter from the mayor, or a letter from the city manager, then you're good.
Say it again, which is the first part we said?
If it's just a letter from the mayor, or from the city manager, you're good with the direction you have. But if you want a council letter, then it has to be on the agenda.
I'm fine if the mayor, the council, the city manager wants to do it.
We'll get that letter prepared for your signature, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Von, anything else?
No, thank you.
Jose?
My weekly COVID report. So, from the start until now, we've had 14,439 positive COVID testing here in Fresno County, 138 deaths. 131 of those deaths have been over 45, they've been over 45 years of age. That represents 94%. 97 are over 65. That's 70%. So, why do I say that? Because it's still, you know, people who are dying are people that are older, that have comorbidities. Most of the people who are dying, of 138 that have died, 106 have comorbidities. So, we need to take care of ourselves, make sure that we do all the, the extensive hygiene that everybody's recommending, use of the mask, the social distance. But, but take care of our, our health, because diabetes, obesity, hypertension, all those other things are still, are the things that are causing great death. It's, it's not all the other stuff. It's mostly age and the comorbidities. That's it.
Mayor, before, before you go, can I just get some clarity from Lynn, what you mentioned earlier with the norms? I, I don't mind us preparing a workshop for us to talk about that. I think that in my three years finishing four years, I think we, we have to be clear in whatever it is. Because I have seen, like, Bob, you showed up at a, you know, some things. And depending on your position, it could be looked as, oh, we're for it or we're not for it, right? So, in other words, we all have been in different situations. So, I just want to make it where it doesn't limit that, that position too much as well. So, the position of the mayor. So, remember there, there was the, the cell towers when we went downtown, right? And so, the council never took a position, but you showed up, I showed up. So, does that mean that, you know, we, we represented the city? And I don't know. You know, it, it's good to talk about. And even if we show up for something where we think is good, you know, and I'll just use the example of sort of the home giveaway or something like that. Is that something the mayor should show up to or not, because we haven't approved it? So, I don't want to get too far. I think this issue has made it where it's been much more divisive. So, that way, I think it conjures up, you know, our, our reaction to it much more, because we have, we have taken stronger positions on this issue. And so, if, if there's a way to help us to develop something, I think I'm all for that. Now, specifically to, I, I do want to say, I support your position in going, Mayor, because I'm speaking selfishly from a parent, where I have a four-year-old or a five-year-old going to school, and I don't know how to teach him, right? And so, I need him with a teacher and, and a TV ain't going to teach him. And so, that's why I'm all for getting them in. And so, that, that's why I, I am in support of the position that you took along with the others. So, just wanted to say. Thanks, Von. Seems like I'm making a, apologizing for upsetting you seems to be becoming a thing that I do a lot these days. Here's, here, when I got the call from Gary about this, I wasn't clear of what kind of event. It sounded more like a, not the press event that, that it was, that it turned out to be. If, if anyone wants to listen to what I had to say, it's that 15 minutes in there. And I thought I was very tempered with the fact that while we need to get our kids back in school, it needs to be done in a safe manner and in conjunction and with the concurrence at the Health Department. I've had, and as a, as the mayor, I get emails from people who are, some of them are desperate. There, I've, I've had conversations with some of my coworkers at work who tell me that their children are falling behind, that distance learning is not working for them, that they are seeing what they describe as clinical depression in their children. We're already in a difficult environment where they can't get away from the anger, which is permeating into our society. And the parents are concerned. They know that they don't have the ability to teach the way their kids are, you know, doing it, how they're getting it at school. One parent told me, "I'm finishing my child's homework so that they don't panic. I'm looking at the potential future issues that'll, that'll happen if we can't get our kids back to school safely." And I, and I was very clear about being safe and doing it in a medically approved manner with the Health Department. 84% of the people who are in prison now don't have a high school diploma. If we have kids who are in the 11th grade, who are socially isolated, who are in a bad home environment, they could very easily turn into dropouts and just get frustrated, throw their hands up. I, from a personal note, if I had to stay at home for six months when I was in high school with the home environment that I lived in, I would have run away or I would have been a potential, I would have, potentially might have harmed myself. It was that bad. I have been asked to step up for barbers, cosmetologists, people who are desperate about their financial situation. And I've done that. I've, I have, even though I have a son who's in the ABC business, and which I disclosed in the letter I wrote to ABC, we have restaurants that are on the verge of implosion. And the lowest level employees are the ones that get hurt the worst, the people who are dependent on tips and salary. They're stuck. When I wrote the letter to the governor regarding the prohibition of sales of ammunition and, and guns, I, I would do it again. And I had 37,000 Facebook likes on that and not one negative comment. I, I did get a negative comment from a former city employee who I have great respect for. And I understand the position that people, especially from the medical end of this, take. And I'm looking at the other side of this. And there, there are these unintended consequences, I think is what they're referred to as. And, you know, this, this whole situation, I, I get emails asking me to step up and speak out for other people. And we don't always have to agree with what we say. I, I think that my, my comments were extremely measured and consistent with, I think what, I, I would hope with what most people would agree with. Of course, I, you know, I certainly don't want to upset any of my peers. But there's going to be times when, as, as an individual, I'm going to speak my mind. I'm going to write my mind. I will try to always be measured and consistent with the spirit of how we do things in our city. And I think it's important that we all speak up. You know, I mean, I, I shouldn't, neither Von nor I should be the people speaking up for cosmetologists and barbers. You know, we all have a role in there. And I, I certainly welcome, if everybody wants to grab an order, I'm more than happy to, to grab the order or just grab an order. Lynn, your lights on. Did you want to say something?
Um, I, I think it's not about upsetting. It's that sound, I mean, so whether you've upset me is, is not the point. I, I think the, what leaders, in my mind, need to do is speak to how we slow the virus. You can talk all day long about opening schools, and I believe everything you just said. We're not opening them because no one doesn't want to. We're not, we're opening, we're not opening because all of us, including the City of Clovis, that was pretty lax in the beginning about, "Oh, don't worry. Come to meetings. Don't wear a mask." We've all contributed to the spread of this virus. So, if the, if the message was, "How do we row together to reduce the virus?" That's one thing. I think just the position on, because the press event devolved into berating Fresno Unified, and there you stood, was like, "Wow, that's just, what is that?" So, I felt like you were used by Gary Bredelfeld and in, in that way where you, the City of Clovis was used to add credibility to a message that I don't, "Do you want to beat Fresno Unified up?" Those parents stood up there and said they hadn't done anything. The ladies were crying. I'm sorry, it's hard. So, I, I, I think it's not about, it's not about the position you took. It's about sort of how we got into that. And is that a role for the City of Clovis? That's my question. So, and, and I will acknowledge that because I do this for a living, I do it for 15 hours a day, I knew what was going to happen as a result of that press conference. And I was like, "Oh, my gosh, get out of the way." And so, I just, I felt like it was an inappropriate use of the city's political and social capital. That's what I thought. And so, whether we agree or not, you did it. It's all good. It's all fine. But I, I just, I don't believe it's the right role for the City of Clovis to speak on what schools should do. I got just as many emails about, from, you have a lot of Valley Children's employees who live in the City of Clovis, like, "What is happening? What is he doing? Community hospital is not supportive of that position." So, I think it's just, we have to be careful where you thread that needle, is all. And so, I just, I think we can leave it. I would like to have a conversation. I don't know how to do group therapy in an open session. But I just feel like we have lost some of our civility. And this issue is really, really hard. I have never seen this in 20 years of doing this, ever. So, maybe we can, the break will be good. We'll take a little moment. You guys don't, you don't have to deal with us. That's good. And see if we can't find a way through this. But even checking in, "Hey, I'm thinking of doing this. What do you think?" I mean, nothing. So, all of that is just protocol we've typically not.
It's kind of difficult to do in the Brown Act environment.
I bet you call at least one person.
I did. I talked, spoke, I spoke to Bob. I, I did speak with Chris Casado, the superintendent. And I went, we, we, it, when she called, I wasn't available. When I called, she was unavailable. May, maybe, maybe we listened with different ears.
Of course.
Because I didn't hear them savage the Fresno Unified School District.
Oh, gosh.
And, and maybe, maybe I didn't listen with that. And the reason I, the reason I spoke was so that if I stand there and someone says something in my presence, and I do not either speak to it or address it, then it looks like, then I'm okay with everything that was said. Do, and, and I was, I did not agree with everything that was said. I'm not going to, you know, get into, I'm not going to stand up there and, and berate somebody. I, I thought I was very positive of my message. I, and I understand your position and I respect it. I did. But the conversation I had with the super, with the, the president of the board, they're ready to go as soon as they can get.
The virus.
Well, I, I don't, well, I, I don't know that that's specifically the situation. If we can get some of our kids back in school, of course, this is a whole different issue. We're talking to the school district's business. If we can get kids partially in school and get this moving forward, maybe half days, something where kids get back in social, or socialized. Go ahead. Jose, go ahead.
I've been here 20 years. I've been here longer than anyone on this dais. And I, I do have recollection of what we've done as individual council members. We've all taken independent political stances on very different, very different political stances. No one's ever challenged our political stance on the dais, ever. So, yes, things have changed. But the only person that has changed, Lynn, is you. Because we've all respected, we all get elected the same way. We're elected at large by the people of the City of Clovis. If they do not like us at large, they can get rid of us every four years. And, and when you say that everybody's on the same page, no, they're not. Clovis Unified wanted to open, but for the governor of the State of California, they would have opened. So, it's, it's not a political issue. It is an opinion issue. And every one of us can have an opinion. We heard Von's opinion. We've heard the mayor's opinion. Just because you have your opinion doesn't make you the queen of Clovis. So, we don't need a special get-together and kumbaya, you know, kind of little get-together to figure that out. You be the political person that you are and try to get elected, and we will too.
And that makes my point, Jose.
Because you're lacking the civility.
I think, I think we're good for a break until September. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.